Good morning. I would like to call this public meeting to order. My name is Adam Rubin. I am a member of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks, and I will be the hearing officer for today's hearing. With me today are Arthur Delinsky, Assistant Corporation Counsel Supervisor of the Real Estate and Land Use Division of the City's Law Department, who is the Commission's counsel for today's public hearing, and Diana Kovalo, Architect of the Historic Preservation Division of the Department of Planning and Development. I'll briefly summarize the nature of today's hearing. The Commission on Chicago Landmarks was established and is governed by the Municipal Code of Chicago. The procedures for today's public hearing are contained in Article 2 of the Commission's Rules and Regulations Governing Hearings on Landmark Designations. The purposes and duties of the Commission are set forth in the Municipal Code and include the identification, preservation, protection, enhancement, and encouragement of the continued use and rehabilitation of buildings and districts that have special historical, community, architectural, or aesthetic interest to the city of Chicago and its citizens. The Commission carries out this mandate by recommending to the City Council the designation of specific buildings, structures, areas, districts, and works of art as official Chicago landmarks. The Commission bases its recommendations on the seven criteria set forth in Section 2120620 of the Municipal Code and the integrity criterion set forth in Section 2120630 of the Municipal Code. The purpose of today's hearing is for the Commission to receive relevant facts and information to assist the Commission on deciding whether to recommend that the Wax Trax Building located at 2449 North Lincoln Avenue meets the criteria set forth in Section 2120620. The format of the hearing will be as follows. First, Diana Kovalo will review the chronology of events related to the proposed designation that have led to today's hearing. Then I will rule on any requests for party status to the hearing by property owners as well as other individuals or organizations. After that, the Commission's staff will make a presentation summarizing the preliminary landmark recommendation and preliminary summary of information for the proposed designation of Wax Trax at 2449 North Lincoln Avenue. After the staff's presentation, property owners and other individuals who have been granted party status will have the opportunity to ask questions of the staff. Then those granted party status by me will be able to make a presentation regarding the proposed landmark designation. Lastly, any members of the public who wish to make a brief statement concerning the proposed landmark designation may do so. We will begin with a chronology of events leading to this public hearing and incorporate the Commission's exhibits into the record. I would like to call on Diana Kovalo to read the chronology of events leading to today's hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. On March 29, 2022, the Program Committee of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks, the Commission, received a suggestion to landmark 2449 North Lincoln Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, the former location of the Wax Trax Record Store. Between February 2023 and April 2024, when the building was listed for sale, Chicago Department of Planning and Development, DPD Historic Preservation Division staff, exchanged emails with the listing agent and owners of 2449 North Lincoln Avenue, Dr. Hanson and Dr. Green, to let them know landmark designation was being reviewed as a possibility for the property. They requested a meeting to be able to explain what this would mean for the owners. Staff received a response on April 14, 2024, from Dr. Hanson, saying that they were not interested in landmarking the building. This is Commission Document 1. On July 9, 2024, Historic Preservation staff sent emails to the owners stating that, based on the research which had been completed, 2449 North Lincoln Avenue met criteria for landmark designation, clarifying that Chicago's Landmarks Ordinance does not require owner consent, and requesting a meeting to discuss the landmark designation process. Dr. Hanson responded later that day via email that they were selling the building and did not want landmark designation. These emails are Commission Document 2. Courtesy letters dated August 1, 2024, were emailed and mailed to the owners to let them know that a preliminary landmark recommendation was scheduled to be on the agenda of the Commission's August 8, 2024 regular monthly meeting. Dr. Hanson emailed back that the same day, indicating they were not interested in pursuing landmark status. The letters and Dr. Hanson's response are included as Commission Document 3. On August 4, 2024, staff followed established practice and emailed a draft agenda for the August 8, 2024 Commission meeting to the owners, copies of which are Commission Document 4. On August 5, 24, staff exchanged emails with Dr. Green, who again stated they were not interested in landmarking. And staff reiterated that owner consent was not required for Chicago landmark designation. This email exchange is Commission Document 5. At the August 8, 2024 Commission meeting, seven members of the general public spoke in favor of the designation, and one more indicated his support but did not wish to speak. No one spoke in opposition to the designation. Written statements by the public submitted to the Commission at the August 8, 2024 meeting regarding landmark designation of Wax Trax are grouped as Commission Document 6. The Commission found that the Wax Trax property at 2449 North Lincoln Avenue met two of the seven criteria for designation as well as the integrity criterion identified in the Chicago Landmarks Ordinance, Municipal Code of the City of Chicago, Section 2120518. As part of the preliminary recommendation, the Commission preliminarily identified the significant historical and architectural features of Wax Trax as all exterior elevations, including roof lines of the building. The Commission voted unanimously to approve the preliminary recommendation, and a copy is included as Commission Document 7. Adoption of the recommendation initiated the consideration process for further study and analysis of the potential landmark designation of the building. As part of the preliminary recommendation, the Commission also adopted a preliminary summary of information dated August 2024, which is identified as Commission Document 8. Historic Preservation Division staff notified the owners about the Commission's preliminary recommendation for landmark designation of Wax Trax with letters dated August 13, 2024, sent via email and certified mail. The letters and proof of the certified mailing are included as Commission Document 9. Dr. Hanson emailed back on August 14, 2024, threatening court action. This email is included as Commission Document 10. At the September 12, 2024 regular monthly meeting of the Commission, Deputy Commissioner Sierra Boatwright stated that the proposed designation of Wax Trax did not raise any concerns or issues from a planning perspective and recommended approval of the proposed designation. The Commission voted unanimously to continue with the designation process by requesting consent from the property owners. In letters dated September 20, 2024, sent via email and the U.S. Postal Service, the Commission officially requested consent to the proposed landmark designation from the owners. The letters notified the owners that they could request a 120-day extension to respond to the Commission's request. The letters also intrigued the owners to return an enclosed form indicating consent or non-consent by November 4, 2024. The letters and forms are identified as Commission Document 11. Reminder letters dated October 21, 2024, were sent to the owners via email and the U.S. Postal Service and are included as Commission Document 12. Dr. Hanson mailed a form, signed on October 30, 2024, to staff indicating he did not consent to the landmark designation, and this is Commission Document 13. Without written consent from the owners of the property, Section 2120650 of the Chicago Landmarks Ordinance requires the Commission to hold a public hearing on the proposed designation. In letters dated December 17, 2024, sent via email and the U.S. Postal Service to the owners, Historic Preservation staff gave notice of the public hearing to be held on January 17, 2025. These are Commission Document 14. Dr. Hanson responded with a negative email on December 17, 2024, which is included as Commission Document 15. Signs noticing the public hearing for Wax Trax were posted in the public right-of-way in front of 2449 North Lincoln Avenue on December 19, 2024. A copy of the notice and photos documenting its placement are included as Commission Document 16. Notices for the hearing were published in the Chicago Tribune on December 25, 2024. A copy of the notice and an affidavit from the Chicago Tribune attesting to its publication are Commission Document 17. The public hearing notice was also posted on the Department of Planning and Development's notice board and website, and a printout of the website is included as Commission Document 18. On January 3, 2025, Michael Hayes, Sr., emailed Historic Preservation staff that he was a lawyer representing the interests of Dr. Hanson and requested a meeting. Staff met with the lawyer on January 7, 2025, and the email thread for these communications is Commission Document 19. That concludes my chronology.
Thank you, Diana. I would like to incorporate these documents of the Commission into the record. The Commission's documents may be examined at this hearing and are also available for inspection at the Commission's office. Next, I will rule on requests for party status. All property owners or their representatives have the right to make a statement for or against the proposed designation. They also have the right to ask questions of Commission staff after staff have completed their presentation. The Landmarks Ordinance also allows property owners and other individuals and organizations to request party status as a party to the hearing. Parties to the hearing proceedings can make longer and more detailed presentations for or against the proposed landmark designation that can include submitting photographs or other documents, as well as presenting testimony from their own witnesses. Parties may also question any other party's witnesses and question the Commission's staff member who summarized the preliminary landmark recommendation. Only those who want to make a more detailed presentation beyond a statement or question need to request party status. Those wishing to request party status should fill out a pink appearance form and return it to a member of the staff. These forms are at the table by the door. If you wish to be a party and you have filled out a pink appearance form requesting party status, I will call on each of you in turn and consider your party request. If you have not filled out a pink appearance form but wish to be a party, please do so now. Please note, however, that party status is not required if a property owner or other individual or organization only wishes to make a statement for or against the proposed designation. Everyone will have an opportunity to make a statement during the public statement portion of the hearing. In addition, property owners have the right to question Commission staff and experts regardless of whether they are parties to the proceeding. If you wish to make statements in support of the proposed landmark designation, you should fill out a blue appearance form, which I have up here, and there's some more in the back. If you wish to make statements in opposition to the proposed landmark designation, you should fill out an orange appearance form. These forms are at the table by the door and should be completed and returned to a member of the staff at this time. Please include your name and address, written clearly, or the name and address of the organization you represent. And I do not have any pink appearance form requesting party status. So we'll move on. We will now hear a presentation by Candelina Hahn of the Commission's staff summarizing the preliminary landmark recommendation for Wax Trax at 2449 North Lincoln Avenue. Ms. Hahn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubin. So in 2022, the Program Committee of the Commission on Chicago Landmarks received a suggestion to landmark 2449 North Lincoln Avenue, which, as you've heard, housed the Wax Trax Record Store from 1978 to 1993. In August 2024, the CCL approved a preliminary landmark recommendation for Wax Trax. And I'll get into their later move towards the end of this. The building is located on the east side of Lincoln Avenue, about a half-block north of the intersection of Lincoln, Fullerton, and Halsted. This is in the Lincoln Park community area on Chicago's north side. In August of 2023, the Commission on Chicago Landmarks preliminarily found that Wax Trax meets two criteria for Chicago landmark designation, including criterion one for heritage. Business and life partners Danny Fleischer and Jim Nash had started their first music store in Denver only a few years before moving to Chicago. They were fans who would travel anywhere to see bands they loved, and it was their love of music and their overflowing collection which led them to starting a business where they could share their joint passion with others. In the 1970s, records at that time were sold in department stores, large chains, and only the occasional independent record store. Nash and Fleischer sought out imports to sell, especially collectible pressings. Obsessed with UK culture, they worked with other collectors who would fly to London to bring back the most recent releases, sometimes getting them before they debuted in their home country. Many remained rare, never to be released in the U.S. The store could also be counted on to carry independent-label releases, something absent from chains and other retailers. Nash and Fleischer also made and sold bootlegs, which were illicitly recorded and released performances or compositions. One of the first they made in Chicago in 1979 was a seven-inch vinyl of Brian Eno proto-punk singles. The store itself at 2449 North Lincoln Avenue proclaimed its purpose and energy from the moment you set foot inside. Music was playing loudly, film clips and early videos played from TVs mounted on the walls. The walls themselves were covered with promotional posters and materials, memorabilia, band and concert photos, picture discs, and neon signage. Rows of record bins had hand-lettered and decorated dividers with band names or sections like "new arrivals" to help guide buyers' curiosity. When Nash and Fleischer vacated the apartment on the second floor in the late 1980s, it was remodeled and turned into new sales space for the store. There, they set up a boutique for clothing, accessories, and publications. Of course, music was the reason people came to the Wax Trax store, but for some, the clothing and accessories sold there were just as important. Distinct clothing was a statement, especially in the 1980s, where movements like punk and new wave came with their own aesthetics, and especially for teenagers wanting to establish their identity. Wax Trax was the first to carry Doc Martens, Tripp New York City, and other brands, which have become staples of music-related fashion. Magazines on offer included not only music industry magazines, but fanzines, a type of fan-based journalism which focused primarily on non-mainstream music genres and bands. If you wanted one of these, Wax Trax was where you went. By 1980, Nash and Fleischer were paying to fly in unconventional bands like Bauhaus, The Cramps, New Order, and The Jam to Chicago for their first-ever shows in the city. In this way, Wax Trax was bringing the world to Chicago. At a time in America when being-- oh, sorry. Yeah, at a time in America when being-- sorry, we've got two pages here. Okay. At a time in America when culture was turning away from the liberal ideals of the 1960s towards the conservative right, Wax Trax provided a rare refuge. It was not only the people who loved the music, but the larger society that felt comfortable there, whether you had a mohawk, whether you wore a business suit, you knew that the person standing next to you, looking at the record in the bins, spoke the same music language that you did. Also, at a time in America when being labeled "homosexually" was generally considered, at best, an insult or a joke, if not justification, for physical abuse or worse, this made the store a sort of safe zone for the LGBTQ+ community. The musicians and the music that was being sold there did not conform to standard gender identity and made that a naturally welcome space for this community. So this alliance was not formal or trumpeted. It was music that led the way. And in this fashion, the store was an extension of Nash and Fleischer. Yeah, they were gay, but that was just a fact, like their hair color or their height. Take it or leave it, it was up to you. But Nash and Fleischer weren't going to hide it. For those in need of some reassurance, the power of this stance was liberating. Having pressed bootlegs, organized concerts, and procured difficult-to-find music from all manner of sources, it was not that much of a stretch for Nash and Fleischer to establish their own legitimate record label. The nature of the work needed to run the store meant they had already established relationships with distributors, manufacturers, venues, and musicians. Their first official-label release in 1981 was done in response to being asked to record and make a pressing for a local punk group called Strike Under. The plan was to sell the EP out of the store, so they only had a small number of records made. But the Wax Trax record label had been launched. For the second release, Jim Nash, a fan of John Waters' films, approached one of his stars, female impersonator Divine, who had up to that point not released any records. Divine accepted his offer, and Wax Trax's second release was a single by Divine. The release was not expected to make much of a profit, but this was not how Nash and Fleischer chose to conduct the store or the label. They sold the music they liked, and they recorded the music they liked, music that other companies would not take a chance on. Wax Trax made its way into the larger culture of the 1980s in Chicago, the nation, and beyond. Film director John Hughes, whose popular career included films Ferris Bueller's Day Off, The Breakfast Club, and Sixteen Candles, lived near Chicago, and he was a big fan of the Wax Trax store. It was there that he first connected with many of the bands that would become staples of his soundtracks, and it was those soundtracks that opened many young listeners' ears to music that couldn't be heard on many radio stations at the time. Hughes even wanted to use the store for his 1986 Pretty in Pink movie, but timing didn't work out. Instead, Fleischer and Nash supplied Hughes with promotional materials to help recreate the store as a set in Hollywood, and these are some of the images from that film. Witnessing all these developments was employee Frankie Nardello, who was in the local band Special Affect with Al Jorgensen. Nardello gave his bosses a demo tape from his friend Jorgensen, who had just put together the band Ministry. When the Wax Trax label released a 12-inch single in 1982 by Ministry, it became a hit in the dance clubs of Europe and made Billboard's Dance/Disco Top 80 chart. Having kept their pulse on the bands coming out of Europe, Nash and Fleischer next set their sights on a Belgian band called Front 242, whose records they had been importing to sell at the store. They engineered a licensing agreement through the band's label to make and distribute their music in the U.S. And in 1983, their first record on the Wax Trax label found success as a dance club hit. This was one of many licensing deals that Nash and Fleischer put together. Much of the success of Wax Trax music was due to its popularity in dance clubs because the music relied on a prominent beat track underlying other instrumentation. Another true line was experimentation with electronics as the primary instruments for both melody and mood, often pushing the sound to the limit of harshness as a reflection of the nihilism and absurdity at the philosophical core of the music. The result was a very machine-made or industrial sound, dubbed "industrial" music by journalists, and Wax Trax Records was seen as the primary label behind the development of this genre in the United States. The Wax Trax label used the Bax Office at 2449 North Lincoln to oversee projects from inception to the final packaging and shipping of the product. When packages left the store, they always included a catalog of Wax Trax releases, and label ads encouraged people to write in for the catalog. This became an integral part of the business and allowed it to expand beyond just the cities where there were record stores that carried the Wax Trax label releases. Rolling Stone mused on the result in 1995, saying Wax Trax was defined a subculture and created a following as strong as any of its individual artists. People would buy any record with the Wax Trax imprint music unheard, and the label often received fan mail of its own. Nash and Fleischer received these on a regular basis, and the letters often expressed the vital role that the records played in people's lives. It was not uncommon for them to hear that Wax Trax releases were a lifeline to people who felt or were made to feel entirely alone in communities without a safe zone like the Wax Trax Record Store. The sense of identity and belonging that Wax Trax Records provided went far beyond simple listening pleasure. The Wax Trax label had begun in the office of the Wax Trax store on Lincoln Avenue, but by 1985, the label's sales had become big enough that new staff were needed, and the office was moved to a building next door. The label prospered through the end of the decade, but financial problems began stacking up. Ultimately, it was the lack of contracts, part of Nash and Fleischer's family-style approach to their business, that allowed major labels to poach their artists, and this spelled the end of Wax Trax. The store on Lincoln Avenue had always been financially linked to the label, with Nash and Fleischer letting funds flow between them as needed to keep both businesses going. At the very time when the owners most needed the store's profits to bolster up the label, the music recording and retail landscape was transforming. Major labels now specifically sought out underground artists like those on the Wax Trax label. Meanwhile, new music stores came to Chicago that offered greater variety than stores of the past. At the same time, new chains like Circuit City, Best Buy, and Target competed for consumers by using their large-scale buying power to offer CDs at lower prices. In 1993, Nash and Fleischer sold the building on Lincoln Avenue and reopened a new store in Wicker Park. The arrival of the Wax Trax store at 2449 North Lincoln Avenue was monumental in terms of shaping Chicago's music scene and in shaping the world's perceptions of Chicago music from that point forward. In 1995, Chicago Tribune music Greg Kot put it this way, "When Nash and Fleischer arrived on Lincoln Avenue to open the Wax Trax Record Store in 1978, Chicago's music scene became hip again. Today, Chicago bands are celebrated worldwide for their cutting-edge cool, a renaissance that began when Nash and Fleischer blew in 17 years ago." Owner Jim Nash succumbed to complications from AIDS in 1995, and his daughter closed the Wax Trax store the following year. Without his partner of nearly 25 years, Fleischer soon found he had no drive to continue the business. Eventually, he returned to Arkansas and had a quieter life, and passed away in 2010 from pneumonia. Looking at the legacy of the store and label Nash and Fleischer had created, Richard Geraldi of Chicago Sun-Times compared Wax Trax Records to another of Chicago's musical institutions. "As important as chess records was to blues and soul music, Chicago's Wax Trax imprint was just as significant to the punk rock, new wave, and industrial genre. What began as a record shop on Lincoln Avenue that specialized in underground music more than 30 years ago morphed into an influential label and seeped into the city's culture." So in addition to the heritage criteria just discussed, the Commission also found that Wax Trax meets criterion four for exemplary architecture. Research has not uncovered the original permit records for the building. However, the earliest map of the area is an 1887 Rascher's atlas from when this portion of Lincoln Avenue was still in the township of Lakeview. The map shows a two-story masonry building at the same location and with the same dimensions as the existing structure. The address at this time was 396 North Lincoln Avenue, and directories show it was occupied by a wallpaper and painting firm. The building’s facade’s refronting with glazed brick is likely from circa 1900, when the building and the two properties to the north were acquired by the Fred Strauss Die Works. The Die Works catered to clients in the garment and fashion industry, so refronting the property would have been a way to stylishly update the building. White glazed brick had become fashionable after Chicago held the 1893 World’s Columbian Exposition, nicknamed “The White City,” for its city-beautiful-inspired, white-colored architecture. This trend in architecture was adopted along the city’s most vital corridor, State Street, as a preferred glating up until World War I. In 1910, it was announced that the Die Works would construct a new Larcher plant at Schubert and Sheffield. After Strauss relocated to the new plant, the building was acquired in 1911 by Harry P. Klassen, who operated an undertaking establishment. Historic Sanborn maps and obituaries indicate that the building housed a series of undertaking businesses until 1972. From 1972 to 1978, the building hosted Casa Bonafetter, a restaurant. And here are images of Wax Traxx from when Nash and Fleischer moved in at Left, and the building after they removed the coating of green paint to reveal the historic facade underneath. The building’s perhaps most dominant feature is a classical revival cornice of unusual size with large curved brackets. Festive swags are set between the brackets, and at the center is a panel which identified the historic name of the building, now blank, topped with a broken pediment. The cornice itself is topped with four acrotirion and an obelisk. All of these motifs are derived from Renaissance revival architecture, which itself took inspiration from classical Greece and Rome. Between the first and second floors, the facade features two limestone belt courses with classical molding. Within this band are three carved mascarons depicting individual variations of smiling female faces, as well as two cartouches rendered in carved limestone. Figurative ornaments like these mascarons are rarely found on a store and flat building. In addition to the criteria just discussed, the commission found that Wax Traxx meets the separate integrity criterion. Nash and Fleischer had built a rear addition, which connected the front building to the existing garage at the rear, to expand the square footage for the store. Since that time, an additional two-story rear addition with garage has been added. At the Lincoln Avenue facade, original windows and storefronts have been replaced, but this is expected with a building of this age and does not affect its ability to convey its historic significance. The facade remains intact. The preliminary recommendation states that the significant historical and architectural features of the building are all exterior elevations and roof lines of the building. That concludes my presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Han. That concludes the staff’s presentation. Kandolin Han staffs the Commission on Chicago Landmarks and is here to take questions from the owners and any other parties. Questions must relate to whether the proposed designation meets the criteria for landmark designation. If you wish to ask a question, please state your name and whether you are the owner, or in what capacity you represent the owner, and the name of your company, if any. And I don’t see anybody here, so we’re going to move right along. We will now take questions from any parties to whom I’ve granted party status. I have not granted party status, so we’re going to move through that as well, which gets us right into presentations. Excellent. Okay, moving right along. Statements by property owners, we don’t have, so into... Oh, there we are, okay. All right, here we go. Because we don’t have the property owner, we will now hear statements from the general public, which is here, regarding the proposed landmark designation. Statements may be made in favor of or in opposition to the proposed landmark designation. Anyone wishing to make a statement in favor of the proposed designation should have filled out a blue appearance form. Again, they look like this, if you haven’t done it already. Those who wish to speak in opposition to the proposed designation should have filled out an orange appearance form. If you haven’t already completed a form, they are available from the staff. Statements from property owners are limited to five minutes, while statements from the general public are limited to three. We don’t have too many people here, so we’ll work at our discretion here. Please state your name and address and the person or organization you represent, if applicable. In the interest of time, you are encouraged to focus your statements on information not previously given by Ms. Han. Instead of an oral statement, you may also submit a written statement. If you wish to submit a written statement, please include your name and address and the person or organization you represent, if applicable, at the top of your statement and give it to a member of the staff. All right, so first, we will hear statements in favor of the proposed landmark designation, and I am going to call on Mark Skilicorn to come up to the microphone right over here. Mr. Skilicorn, the floor is yours. Yep, go ahead.
...the opportunity to speak today. My name is Mark Skilicorn. My wife, Julie Nash, and I currently own and run Wax Traxx Records. Wax Traxx was founded by her father, Jim Nash, and his partner Danny Fleischer, and was at this building from, as we heard, 78 to 93. I know that it’s represented as a record store and maybe a record label, but it really went a lot deeper than that. It was a safe place for people that felt marginalized, either by choice or not by choice, and this really was a social network before we even knew what that term was. There’s no disrespect to the owners, but I do want to bring up their actual listing, and I’m going to read what their description is. “Historic Lincoln Park building formerly home of the legendary Wax Traxx Records.” So they obviously understood the significance of this building, but also was using it as a marketing tool as well as to sell that. In the last meeting, I submitted about 10,000 petition signatures. Today, I would like for the public record to submit testimonials, and it really talks about what this meant to people. I understand that not everybody can go through this stack, but I encourage you to please read the first one, because it sums things up in kind of a gut-wrenching way more eloquently than I can. Beyond testimonials, and beyond the cultural significance, there’s a financial significance as well. Wax Traxx has not diminished. If anything, it’s gotten stronger, and we had a Wax Traxx band recently come into town for two sold-out shows at the Chicago Metro. That brought in revenue to the city, thousands of people, and many of those ended up taking the pilgrimage to the building to see where it all began. That’s all I have for you today. Please, next meeting, please vote yes on landmark status. Thank you for your time, and thank you for all the people who are here today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skilicorn. I now call up Herb Rosen.
Hi, thanks very much. I didn’t really prepare anything, but I’m a lifelong resident and a 30-year business owner here in Chicago. I own a club called The Liars Club that we opened in 1995, and I kind of grew up... A lot of the points have been mentioned already, but I kind of grew up in Wax Traxx, and as Mark mentioned, it was a gathering place for disenfranchised, different kids of all ages, and what became, and what was a store, really became a worldwide phenomenon for punk rock that was not only important artistically, but for pop culture, and something that is, you know, pervasive through the entire world now and considered normal. But back then, it was a movement that was just starting, and that was the importance of it to me, and thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosen. Next up, we’ll have Alexander Scott Dennison, followed by Julie Karas.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I’m not a resident of Chicago, I’m visiting. My wife recently took a job here, and I’m not sure how long we’ll be here, but this was a unique opportunity for me to share the impact socially and musically that Wax Traxx had on my life. As a teenager, I grew up homeschooled, and at that time, that event shaped me immensely. I was a self-taught guitarist, had lived in 10 states by the time I was 18 years old, and ultimately found my way across the lake to Calvin College, where I studied music. During that time, in the early 90s, it was at the end of the Wax Traxx era, but I can say from personal experience that it served as a cornerstone in many ways for my life and my travels around the country. I’m still friends with people who performed music in bands that were originally signed to Wax Traxx Records back in the day. If you travel the world and you speak to people who love music, and you describe, you know, what is your background, what were your influences, and you mention that, well, I came up in the 90s, I studied classical music, but I was heavily involved in socially with the scene in Chicago that gave rise to bands like Ministry and Nine Inch Nails, even people who aren’t associated with the industrial or punk rock music scene and maybe associated with dance music or what have you, see this music as the backbone of electronic music. People that I’ve spoken to who have listed this entity, Wax Traxx, as influential in their lives and the development of their music career. And I prepared some remarks, and I wanted to speak not necessarily to the architectural significance of the building, which I found that presentation fascinating, but more so to the cultural and social significance, and why I think it’s important that it be recognized in this manner. I think it’s completely appropriate, because, as was mentioned previously, it has had significant impact on millions of people, no doubt, around the world, and I’m grateful that a few of us had the opportunity to come here to share that with you today. But back in this time, before the internet, there was a culture that developed around the country, and you could go to see these bands perform, and you would run into your friends, whether you were in Florida, which is where I’m from, going down to Ebor City to see my life with the Throwkill Cult perform, or whether you’re in San Antonio, where I was born, which may have been the first place that I met everyone from Ministry and started to really learn about what was going on in industrial music. This became, like was said previously, a social network for those of us who were maybe not on a mainstream track. Ultimately, I became an attorney. I practiced for a law firm out of Coral Gables, Florida, right now, completely unrelated to my love, which is music. But Wax Traxx, as I mentioned, was the cornerstone of what people commonly refer to as Chicago industrial music, and that touches on music that was produced in Europe, in England, bands who became well-known that all used this foundation that was laid as a springboard. Not only the store itself, but the label, which I’m happy to hear is continuing to thrive today in the challenging world that is presented with electronic distribution of music. It’s not simply the building, it’s not simply the structure, but there are people all over the world, I’ve met them, who have been touched by the impact, and I think that when it comes to a city’s identity, there’s a generation, namely my generation, that doesn’t associate with Chicago with the blues at all, or jazz, or anything else. They associate Chicago with a very aggressive, gritty, minimalistic, computer-aided, but yet also, you know, the guitar is definitely a big part of it as well, and that has just become etched into our psyche. So having the opportunity here today to share some of my story with you, and to do my part to persuade you of the significance of a guy from Florida thinks that this is important enough, that people will come here, and they will see this building, and they will remember these times, whether they were there or not. And the only thing I wanted to add was, from a fashion standpoint, the comment about Doc Martens, I still own five of them, five pair of them, and it’s such a joy for me, for my 20-year-old, to now be buying them and to be learning about these times that occurred in our youth, and how important these iconic things were to us. So thank you all, and I hope that when you do vote, that this will get the designation it deserves.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Next up, we’ve got Julie Karas, followed by Daniel Garibey. Hope I’m pronouncing that correctly.
I’m Julie Karas, and I’m an early... I was an early customer, late 79, and the building itself is important. I mean, I come from it as somebody who loves Chicago architecture, and that was a block of cultural spaces, like the Biograph, like Three Penny Theater, that’s now Lincoln Hall, Holstein’s, which was a folk club, a legendary folk club, was also across the street, Guild’s Books. So it was a hub of innovative and progressive musical and literary culture, and Jim and Danny changed Chicago music, and they were very aesthetic people, and I think that not only the location was appealing to them, that commercial strip, but I think that they picked the building because of its beauty and its history, and it was a refuge, that’s true, for all different kinds of people, and they were very, you know, community is... There needs to be that third place, which is very trendy, but it was a third place, an exceptional one, and your presentation was really good, so I don’t really have that much more to add. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Karas. Daniel Garibey, followed by Stephanie Wright.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Daniel Garibey. I want to say my reason why this should be a landmark in the city of Chicago. Just like 206 South Jefferson, the warehouse, the Chicago House, this building represents what it is to be a Chicagoan. Now, I’m 47 years old. I used to go to this store when I was probably eight, one of my brothers. At 12 years old, I was a radio DJ as part of the Boys and Girls Club of Chicago at 2801 South Ridgeway in Little Village. This was a change of Bohemian neighborhood into a Mexican neighborhood, and you really didn’t have any exits to go and find music. So we had to go up north, and I was very privileged to be raised with eight siblings that were musicians, that were all taught at the Boys and Girls Club. And so to find a source of different styles of music, you know, it was an exit to come out of a poverty neighborhood and to go listen to social change, that it’s, you’re not the only one living in social change. The world around you is living in social change. This building represents that. You went there, you listened, you hung out, you were part of... There was a lot of Chicago social change happening at that time. I was too young to understand it. I listened to it, and you listened to it, and you listened to it, and then it sinks in, and you understand, and you read the papers. This place means a lot to Chicagoans, a lot to people around the world. This institution has brought a lot to the city of Chicago, not only as far as industrial music, which is now what these kids utilize as EDM, because it’s electronic music, but this is the forefront of how this institution began. I’m very grateful. Also, this gave me the opportunity to have this knowledge, to be a buyer of Tower Records on Clark Street at 2301 North Clark, for about almost 10 years. So this building means a lot to have, just like 206 South Jefferson, just like the Cabaret Metro, just like Dave Medusa Shelter, all these places were institutions, are institutions to the city of Chicago. Everybody looks to the city of Chicago, just like chess records, just like legends, the blues, rosas. We have to have, this is beyond due for the city of Chicago, because we draw, we are the Mecca of tourism. People come to Chicago, and we want them to continue to come to Chicago, because we’re giving them something back. We’re giving them a hope, an understanding that, you know, if you make it in Chicago, you can make it anywhere, anywhere. So I believe that this building here, which, believe it or not, I purposely moved there after coming back from Arizona, just stay close, because it means so much to me. The music, the label, you know, it’s everything that, you know, if you have that one book, two, three, four books that you have, that you always hold, that you’re always going to go to, same thing with records. You’re always going to go to it, because it’s an exit. It relieves you from whatever else is going on in your life, or whatever else is going on in the world. It’s an exit to go and just put you on your headphones and listen to that record. I bought that record at Wax Traxx when I was eight years old, and I still have it with, you know, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Stephanie Wright, followed by Patrick Grossi of Preservation Chicago.
Hi, I’m Stephanie Wright. I was born and raised here. I spent most of my teenage allowance at Wax Traxx every week. The person before me mentioned the warehouse building on South Jefferson that was granted landmark status for their significance in the house music scene. I just wanted to mention that, like everyone else has in their testimonials, the community for Wax Traxx is still very much alive. I’ve traveled to other cities, states, countries with Wax Traxx t-shirts on, hoodies on. I always have someone either, you know, “Hey Wax Traxx,” or become a friend with a more meaningful conversation, just based on that, whatever I’m wearing signifies Wax Traxx. So I’m not much of a public speaker, but that’s all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Grossi, the floor is yours, followed by... All right, Mr. Grossi, the floor is yours, followed by Spencer Montgomery.
Good afternoon, or good morning, rather. Patrick Grossi speaking today on behalf of Preservation Chicago. Preservation Chicago wishes to reiterate its support for this landmark recommendation. The preliminary report makes a concise and convincing argument that Wax Tracks is a cultural landmark, not just for Chicago, but as you're hearing, for an international community of musicians and music lovers, freaks and geeks. A subculture and celebrated subgenre literally flourished here in modeled ways in which a modest, unassuming retail space can foster a tangible communal experience. That Wax Tracks was housed in a surviving late 19th century structure with a highly distinctive early 20th century commercial facade only bolsters its merits. So Preservation Chicago strongly supports this recommendation and applauds everyone who has sought this designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grossi. Spencer Montgomery, followed by Greta Barker. Right, you pass? That's fine. Greta Barker, you're up next, followed by Marlene Seles.
My name is Greta Barker, and I spoke at the last meeting of the Landmark Commission, so I won't really go over what I stated there, but I'd like to say that, yes, I was one of the original employees at Wax Tracks on Lincoln Avenue for a little over five years. And after that meeting, my son reminded me that I should probably have mentioned this, which is my memoir, Don't Stand In Line, and it's about growing up in Chicago, but a good portion of that is about also being involved in the music scene, and that kind of started out at Wax Tracks and meeting a lot of people, and eventually, for me, going to law school to learn how to help my friends who were musicians and visual artists to protect their intellectual property rights. And so it's been a big part of my life, Wax Tracks. I was also married for 34 years to one of the artists on the label, and so had a lot of experience with how that music influenced popular culture, especially in movies and television, skateboard videos, streaming, you know, other bands, like Nine Inch Nails has already been mentioned. And I also wanted to say that I did a reading about a year ago at... Joe Shanahan from the Metro asked me to read at the G-Man Tavern, which I did after my book came out, and it was, you know, a lot of fun. A lot of people came, and, you know, I sold a lot of books, but I've since heard from so many people, you know, that Wax Tracks really touched their lives, and I've had people since then come up to me and say, "You saved my teenage life." You know, people who I'd never met before, but who either remembered me from Wax Tracks or who had read my book. But I also wanted to say that I'm not a big social media person, but I do belong to a few groups, and one of them is a Wax Tracks Records Facebook group that has 65,000 members And it's obvious that that place and, you know, the culture that came out of it and the music has really been important to a lot of people around the world, as has already been stated, and thank you for your wonderful presentation. It really encapsulates what happened there at that store specifically. The last thing I wanted to say, I was reminded recently because I listened to the program Sound Opinions, and Sound Opinions is a nationally syndicated music-related show that's syndicated by NPR. And Greg Cott, who was earlier mentioned, he was the music, rock music critic for the Chicago Tribune for 30 years, and he is now co-host of this show, Sound Opinions. And this last weekend, I was listening to the show, and he again referenced Wax Tracks Records and its influence on him, or it reminded him of a time he was in the store or a record he bought. And this is how many years later? And he regularly brings up either the label or the store of him actually being there. And that program is, you know, syndicated around the country. And I'm glad to be back in Chicago after 30 years, and I really want that building to be preserved because I think, you know, Chicago, for me, is a city that cares about its architecture and what it looks like, and it's so much fun driving around and seeing buildings like that that represent an era architecturally because of the, you know, the significance of the facades and all of that, but just the culture behind it. And so please do your damnedest to preserve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barker. Marlene Seles, followed by Josh Pyle.
Well, I'm a little short. So good morning, everyone. My name is Marlene Seles, and I'm a resident of Chicago, and I grew up going to this record store, and I want to voice my support for making it a landmark. Basically, make no mistake, this is more than a record store. It's a cultural icon for Chicago. It put Chicago on the forefront of the industrial music scene, and it is recognized as the birthplace of industrial music in the U.S. As a teen, my frequent trips to Wax Tracks allowed me to discover a lot of bands that I wouldn't have otherwise, and it means a great deal to a lot of us. For those of us that were lucky enough to go there, it definitely left an indelible mark and helped shape the person I am today. Places like Wax Tracks simply don't exist anymore, and that is simply a shame because this place brought many people together from different backgrounds and formed a community. It was truly a one-of-a-kind record store that was admired by not only customers, but musicians and filmmakers, like you've already heard. There's, besides Pretty in Pink and serving, you know, John Hughes was a big fan of Wax Tracks, and the record store in that movie was actually named Tracks, like you heard earlier in the movie Pretty in Pink, but also in the movie High Fidelity, John Cusack's character wore a Wax Tracks t-shirt. And again, you know, there's too many musicians to mention, but I'll just name a few. The Ramones, Bauhaus, Dave Grohl from Foo Fighters, Trent Reznor from Nine Inch Nails have all spoken about their love of Wax Tracks. So it's places for me that, like this Wax Tracks, that made growing up in Chicago such a wonderful place to live. This city is rich in cultural diversity, and it is important that the Chicago Landmark Commission recognize that what an impact Wax Tracks has been to our community, and what better way to preserve Chicago's musical legacy than by granting Wax Tracks landmark status? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Josh Pyle, followed by Jose Loera.
All right, I'm a little tall, so I need to adjust the mic a little bit. All right, hi. Thanks for letting me speak, and thanks for just this meeting today. I spoke last time as well. I just want to reiterate a few comments. I'll probably repeat myself for those who saw that recording. But my name is Josh Pyle. I've lived in Chicago for over 20, 25 years, and actually, one of the things that really brought me to Chicago and inspired me even when I was a teenager in the late 80s was Wax Tracks. You know, just piecing things together, Pretty in Pink, these films, the John Hughes films, Left of the Dial Radio, the brand of Wax Tracks was very strong, and that really inspired me. It was really gravitated to that music. Growing up in Texas, Mark mentioned in a previous meeting, the people who felt alienated on your own, looking for a sense of community with industrial music, electronic music, and things like that. So I ended up going to Wheaton College. I think someone mentioned Calvin College here, which I think is kind of funny. But that said, the first thing my friend and I did, once we figured out we were of the same tribe, the first week at Wheaton College in 1991, we made a pilgrimage to Wax Tracks, and it was an epic thing. Again, I don't want to repeat all the same things that have been said already, but we really found that sense of community, and it was quite remarkable, and it was a huge influence. And I eventually decided to stay in Chicago, so Wax Tracks could have, in fact, been an influence in that as well. But it's interesting. I've worked in tech for many years. I think Chicago is a great city for cutting-edge things, and Wax Tracks was one of those amazing elements of it. And the rich history of Chicago and music can't be understated. A few years ago, I had a coworker from France come to Chicago, and the first thing he wanted to do was check out Chess Records, and so we went on a pilgrimage to Chess Records, and I thought to myself, why doesn't Wax Tracks have historic status as a public landmark? Because the influence is so global, just like everyone was saying a little bit earlier. So again, we hope you make the right decision in granting cultural landmark status to the Wax Tracks building. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And last, we have Jose Loera of Laser Graffiti.
I'm a bit shorter. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I kind of feel like I should. I've lived here all my life. I am now owner of Laser Graffiti Lighting. We do laser shows. I grew up on the South Side as well, as you had mentioned. The only radio station, if I wanted to hear this kind of music, was a small Boys and Girls Club station, WCYC. Growing up on the South Side, I grew up literally down the street from Tracks Records, which was house music. House music, that was just it. And I never really felt like I fit into that culture. One day, somebody played a Front 242 record for me, and I was like, oh, my God, what is this? Led me to Wax Tracks, which, at that point, I kind of felt like I came into my own, my people. I felt really at home, really welcomed, and it started a journey that led me into event promotion, which I tried to spread the music and the culture to other people. Then now I do lighting and lasers for concerts. I used to drag my little brother around. He was too young to really appreciate any of it. He's a state senator now, and that's probably because of Wax Tracks. You can't say it wasn't. But one thing I just want to touch on, we did have a tour. We did go get to see the building recently, and we were with the brand, Front 242. And one of the things I noticed is, when they were in front of the building, they were like, oh, my God, you know, they recognized it. It was memorable. And then we went down to where Medusa's was. You couldn't even recognize it. They had to run to the back to go look at the back window to be like, oh, yes, I remember this building. It would really be a shame to see Wax Tracks go the way of Tracks Records, the alley, Medusa's. You walk past any of these buildings, they don't look like their former self. You can't... There's no history left. You don't recognize them. All the memories, everything that happened in those places, they're gone. But through the eyes of the artists, when they came and they saw that building, the memories are still there. The love is still there. So that's why I really think that it should be preserved, so people could still remember what it was like, maybe be taken back, bring their kids and be like, this is what it looked like when I was your age, instead of, well, they kind of used to look like this, this used to be here. So it would really be a shame to lose this. So hopefully, use a vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing that there is nobody who has submitted a statement opposed to the proposed landmark designation, this concludes today's public hearing, and thank you to everybody who did come out and for your heartfelt testimony today. We hope to see you again at a future full landmarks hearing. The commission will consider the entire record, including the transcript of today's hearing, at its regular monthly meeting, which will be on Thursday, February 6, 2025, and to determine whether to make a final recommendation to City Council on the proposed landmark designation of Wax Tracks at 2449 North Lincoln Avenue. The commission's monthly meeting is open to the public and is scheduled to take place at 12:45 in City Council chambers on the second floor of City Hall 121 North LaSalle Street. Details for participation are available on the commission website at chicago.gov/ccl. Thank you for attending today, and this concludes today's session.